Good morning all and welcome to the county of Marion on this beautiful fall day. Just as a reminder, please turn off all electronic devices or silence them for the duration of our meeting. Any materials you wish to have distributed to the board, please do so by giving it to our Sergeant of Arm, which is Commissioner Jim Kern. If you wish to address the board during public comment, both on the resolutions or just general, please go to the podium, state your name and where you're from, and then feel free to speak to us for that two-minute duration. And before we go into the invocation and the pledge allegiance, I just want to acknowledge that there's a member of our board that's taken another turn around the sun. He celebrated a birthday yesterday. That's Commissioner Kern. And then he, he shared that day with all the farmers. It was National Farmer Day. And so since we are in the, the beginnings, actually in the middle of harvest season, I wanted to just announce that there is a campaign for farm road safety going on through our local Farm Bureau agency. And so I know our road department posted to be mindful of slow-moving vehicles because they are helping to make certain that food gets on our table. So let's make sure they get back home to their table with their family by just being mindful of their time on the road. With that being said, we have the invocation and the pledge allegiance being led by Commissioner Bell and Commissioner Volrath. Please join with us if you wish.
Shall we bow our heads? Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather together this morning to conduct business. Lord, we thank you and acknowledge you for being a good God, a God of sovereignty, a God of grace and a God of love. Lord, we thank you for the sacrifice your son did. He gave his life so that we may live. Lord, we thank you, oh God, for every home that's represented here. Thank you for every life that is lived, committed to doing your goodwill and carrying out your purpose here for the people of Marion County, for the state of Michigan, and for the United States of America. We ask that you bless every person who is sick, who is homebound. And Lord, lift up those who are bowing their heads in bereavement. Lord, we thank you and we ask for your guidance, your wisdom, your love and your grace as we conduct the business of Marion County. In these and all blessings, we ask in your Son Jesus' name for his sake. Amen.
Please direct me now in honoring our country and our flag.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell and Commissioner Volrath. Appreciate that. And with that, we're gonna do our roll call.
Bell.
Here.
Kern.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Hinkleman. Majerik.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Volrath.
Present.
Werfel.
Here.
Yarborough.
Elliot.
Freeling.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have ten present, two absent.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Moving on in the agenda, approval of the minutes from the October 6th, 2022 meeting. Did everybody receive those minutes? I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bell, supported by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion, provisions, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, no. All right, minutes are approved. Communication.
Yesterday, I emailed you a list of communications. They were Kathy Burzak, a volunteer at Marion County Animal Control, and the email in support of Ashley Hearn being made the new animal shelter manager received on October 9th. Monica Oakland, a volunteer at Marion County Animal Control, an email commending Ashley Hearn and recommends her to be the new animal shelter manager received on October 11th. Victoria Dunlop, Coloma, volunteer at the Marion County Animal Control, asking you to seriously consider Ashley Hearn for the animal shelter manager position received on October 12th. Dan Unruh, Bridgeman's Chief of Police, an email resigning from the position as an appointed member of the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board, received on October 12th. And Christopher Martin, Southwestern Michigan Planning Commission, an email seeking project nominations for the Grand Ham, Graham Woodhouse Intergovernmental Effort Award, received on October 12th. That's all.
Everyone received those communications? Excellent. All right, we are on to that part of our agenda where we are open for public comments in regards to the nine resolutions that we have on our consent agenda, including those that are added resolutions. If you have any comments that you wish to share with the board, please do so by going to the podium.
On the last page, 6367. There's been another shakeup in one of our departments, animal control. I knew it was the lady here about a month ago. Remember, she was complaining about something and I kinda took her side. See, the reason I took her side is because she's the only one that came up there. We didn't know what was going on over here. You guys put everything under the rug. What was, what was going on over there? Why did you guys make all these changes? Why did she come in and complain? I'd like to hear the other side of it too, so that I wouldn't, wouldn't take somebody's side. Like here, you take two deputies out of there, or a couple of deputies making part of the sheriff department. Then you create a new position. You eliminate the manager or director, and now you call him a manager. This is like a department head. He's got no authority. If something goes on over there again, what does he got any, has he got any authority to kick somebody's butt? Somebody gets out of line? He's not really a boss. What you need is a boss, somebody with a little authority. Then you're not gonna handle this mess. You did the same thing with the, with the road commission. No, you eliminated the commission. Now you're in charge of it. What do you know about roads? You destroyed the road commission. There were people on that commission that knew something about the roads. You guys did the same thing with the, the health department, almost. But this is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pelzer. Are there any other public comments as it relates to our resolutions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, or consent calendar, including the two added resolutions, both in opposition of short-term rental legislation, and the other is to appoint the animal shelter manager.
I'd like to make that motion to the board.
It's been moved by Commissioner Volrath and supported by Commissioner Martin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Kern.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Volrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have ten yeses.
All right, the consent calendar has been approved and those resolutions have been adopted. We move on to committee reports and we will start with personnel.
The number one committee for today. So thank you, Madam Vice Chairman. So we met this morning, we reviewed the, our monthly report of pension rollovers and refunds and approved those. We also had Guy Miller in from the Health Department giving us an update on Health Department activities. An item of note is the desire to have some support for the WIC program down in the New Buffalo area. So they're actively talking to various organizations about that. We also considered an advanced step higher in, for the breastfeeding peer counselor. It's a vacant position. It's been gone unfilled. They've identified a, a potential candidate and are ready to make an offer. And we did review that, talk about it and approve it. It's within the budget parameters for the department. Also receiving a contract from the Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Program. It's in the amount of $316,715. This is a contract to complete various activities regarding avoiding use of substances that might affect the health. And so we did approve that. And then we also considered several items from the Parks Department. The first is a grant application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. This would be for the replacement of the playground equipment at Silver Beach. The grant application would be for a million dollars with a 10% match required by the county if funded. And so we did consider that and approve that. Next would be a, something we do pretty much every year. This is for the scrap tire program. We work through Van Buren County. They're our local authorizing agency, and so we did approve that also. And then next month, or next week, we'll be presenting reinstatement of the tuition reimbursement program for the board to consider. We have, also have in front of you a board appointment for Jan Birmingham to the Mental Health Board. This is, if you remember back, we appointed Brenda Lane to the Health Board, but then because of some health issues, Brenda had to decline. And so now Jan is, was curriculum director at Marion Springs Public Schools. She has retired, her husband has retired. They moved to the, to Marion County now. And she has served on the St. Joe County Mental Health Board, so very qualified. And so we are recommending that for consideration and approval by the board. That would be my motion, Madam Chair, Vice Chair.
So we are making a, taking the recommendation of the Personnel Committee in the motion that's on the table right now is to appoint Janet Birmingham to the Mental Health Authority to fill a vacancy. The term expiring 3/31 of 2025.
Correct.
It's been supported. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Janet has been appointed and I'm assuming that Annette will handle making that motion.
Is her microphone on? Ms. Terrence?
Oh no, there were no mics on at that point in time, so. Your mic was on? Okay. So we at least get audio.
So I'd be glad to answer any questions about any of the other items that PHSC considered.
Are there any questions for PHC? All right, hearing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Administration Committee. Commissioner Kern.
Thank you. We did meet this morning and our first presenter was Mark Heiliger from the Road Department. He provided us with a handout, current projects that are underway. He said that they're hoping to have all the paving projects done by the middle of November, primarily because of the weather, trying to get all those projects in. He talked about the three bridge projects that are ongoing right now. Walton Road Bridge, Napier Avenue Bridge, and the Hill Road Bridge. Walton Road should be done by sometime mid, late October, and the other two by the end of November. He also talked about having a surplus of white paint to do lines on the roads. So they are going to do more miles of white paint yet this year. He talked to us about personnel and that he currently has 63 of 77 positions. A majority of the open positions he has are medium equipment operators. I think we reported out before that at the fair, you know, they did a nice, had a nice presentation at the fair. Did get some candidates out of the fair, but he's still short and they're working on it. He's also working with Brian and, and Shelley to do the salary study for them, and we're not done with that yet. There's still a couple of other departments that are being looked at, so he talked about that a little bit. He did bring us up to date that the Three Oaks Garage, which is an unoccupied garage, was vandalized. And it appears it's probably kids. You know, they broke in, took motor oil, spread it around, just kinda being mischievous. So they did make a police report with the Sheriff's Department. He talked about recycled asphalt pavement. It's a rap. It's a material that's put on top of dirt roads. He talked about recycled asphalt pavement, it's a rap, it's a material that's put on top of dirt roads. Apparently, up in Dave's area, they've got an issue with it, but Mark assured us that it is a perfectly safe process, that we've been doing it for years, but apparently just now it became an issue. So, anyway, he brought us up to, up to date on that. That's all on the Road Department. Next in to see us was Steve Pransley, the prosecutor. He opened by telling us that he does teach in the schools. He teaches cyberbullying and school safety. So, he, he didn't make it to our meeting last month, and that's why, because he was teaching, which we encourage, we think that's great that he does that. He was very, very appreciative of this board and the complement change, the seven people that, that we approved for him. He has, of those seven positions, right now he's in the process of interviewing for those evidence specialists. There were four of them. That's kind of the most critical to his department right now, in getting those positions filled. So, that's what he's interviewing now. The contract with WestMed, who does our autopsies, the medical examiner, that type of thing, that contract is, is up and is being renegotiated at this time. And I don't know if it was Brian or me or who reported out that, that this past year we were like a hundred thousand over. So, we're building into the 2023 bill budget, hopefully a, an average, so that we won't get hit with that. And, and we do not control who gets an autopsy and who doesn't. It's strictly up to them and the state law that dictates that. So, part of the budget planning process, they're preparing for that. Any questions on the Road Department or the prosecutor? Okay. We had our Vice Chair and Administrator in. I believe they were in Finance and talked about the contract extension with Southwest Michigan Planning Commission. We fully support that as well. Sheriff's Distribution Funds, the sheriff gets his funding through the Marion Community Foundation. Request was put in for $17,795.29, and that is for the motorcycle program. The foundation pays for the motorcycles, so that, that, that is what that was for. I signed it. Property use request form. This was for the West Courthouse Parking Lot. It is the Car Guy, Southwest Michigan Cars and Coffee. And the dates that he's, that he's requesting are starting in May of 2023. There are a lot of unknowns between now and May of 2023. So, what we did is we said, we're sending this back to Annette, back to the administration, and asking this gentleman to resubmit this in March of 2023. That way, we can definitely reserve those dates for him at that time. And Commissioner Werfel pointed out on this, dates that he's requested, she knows one of them is a conflict with the Crassel Art Center, and so obviously the Crassel would have priority. So, we are sending it back, I guess, to Annette to make sure that he knows if there are conflicts, he knows those conflicts upfront, and to resubmit this in March of 2023. Overall, we don't have a problem with it, just a little too far in advance. We don't know about maintenance to the parking lot, you know, any, any other of the already scheduled events that, that don't put in this far in advance. You know, we don't want this to supersede the events that go on every year. So, we don't have a problem with it, it's just submit it in more of a timely fashion. This far in advance, there's too many unknowns. We have resolutions. We have four resolutions for you the next time we get together. Resolution ending in three, seven, nine, this is a trail project with Marion Springs Oranoke Township. And in this case, we are just strictly the fiduciary. The Marion County Road Department has to act as a fiduciary for this trail project. And so, it is a total project is 345,600. Federal funds are covering 205,704. That leaves a balance of the project at 139,896. That is being funded through the Marion County Sheriff, or Marion County Road Department, but is funded by Oranoke Charter Township. So, that is just to approve that. Resolution ending in three, eight, two. This is a contract that we entered into with M.D. And there were some modifications to that contract, and M.D. is requiring the same person that signed the original contract sign this, which was Kevin. So, this, this resolution, instead of Mark signing, because Mark is the director, this authorizes Kevin to sign it because he was the interim director and signed the original contract. We have another one. Resolution ending in three, seven, five. This is one that I believe Brian and Terry talked to the Finance Committee about. This is for Whitman to do the additional work out at the existing juvenile center to, to straighten out and get a proposed resolution to the sanitary sewer and the water system out there. So, this resolution, Finance has already seen it, this is the resolution that is authorizing that work to be done. The last resolution we have for you ends in three, seven, eight, and this is with the, the State Emergency Management Performance Grant. This basically pays 50% of our emergency management director's salary. So, this is Rocky Adams, basically pays half of his salary. So, that's what this resolution is, and that is our report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the Finance Committee and Commissioner Yarborough.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Our visitors were Administrator De Sette and Vice Chair Freely. And Administrator De Sette explained to us the resolutions, I wondered if we had any questions about it. What I would like to talk about is that next week, we're coming to you with three resolutions. One is ending in three, six, eight, and it's an annual thing that we must do, that as the board we must approve. And what it is, is the, to apportion the amount of property taxes to be raised by the various taxing jurisdictions, and that is about the millages to be levied. Another one is ending in three, seven, seven. This is the County Broadband Internet Task Force, BCBIT, to demonstrate the commitment of Marion County Board of Commissioners in improving accessibility to broadband. And this is what Administrator De Sette explained to us in our Committee of the Whole, where we had already authorized $20,000, but we'd like to raise it up to an amount of $70,000 and add more hours to Southwest Michigan Planning Person, that's the grant writer, so that we can help the communities, the townships, villages that are applying with their grant writing, so that we can tap into all those different things that has money for, for our broadband. Then the, is there one more? Three, seventy-seven? Oh, yes. The, other resolution is ending in number three, eighty-one, and it's the Master Plan Distribution that will be given to the different, it's Michigan Planning Enabling Act, PA 33 of 2008, as amended. It requires the County Planning Commission to update their county master plan every five years. And so, this is what we're asking you to sign that or to accept it next week. Then I have waiver requests. There are four of those, and one is with Core Real Estate. It's through the Parks Department, Parks and Recreation. We are purchasing a piece of land in Niles, connected to or to do with the Madeleine Virgin Park. And because of the bids, I'm sorry, not the bid, but this, what do you call it when they assess? No. Appraisal, yes, the, I have so many words. The appraisal was done, and it was much higher than we expected the value to be. And so, we are, the state of Michigan and all, has asked us to find an expert to explain that and to help the family that's selling the land to Marion County Parks to be able to donate the difference. They want to go with what we first thought it would be, and they will donate the difference to Marion County Parks as a gift, so that it can happen. And this is to the Department of Natural Resources. I hope I'm saying it right, because I keep changing the name. But it's going to happen, and it's the, what's the family's name? Hellman?
Yeah.
The Hellman family. So, that'll be a real good asset for Marion County Parks, and it's right on the St. Joe River. Another one is with the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission, the grant writing, that's the waiver of the $50,000. And then Whitman Associates, this is all connected. You were telling us about the water sewer. They're going to look at that and see what is the best way to make that water into Marion County's name. And I'm sorry, not the water, but yes, all the lines and all, to come to us, what to do. Take out some wells, put in the water tower, all those concerns. And I think that this is going to happen as soon as possible, because there's concern about the water tower and the water not being moved enough to not freeze. And then we have put on, again, another word, I can't think of what it is, but nine trucks, two thousand three Ram, three-quarter ton, four-door. There are nine of those trucks that we are securing, so that in 2003, we will be able to get them, but we want them to know we're ordering them and for them to be made. So, and that amount is 440,258. We accepted the minutes. We've been heard about the approval of the weekly bills and road tables, and that was, that's my response.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of the committees for the work that they do. Yes, there's a question from Commissioner Werfel.
Question for Finance. Did you say there was going to be an increase in the tax levy next week, a resolution?
Let me see what it says. It's, it is a request for millages to be levied by various taxing jurisdictions in the county of Marion. It doesn't say anything about.
So, next week in Committee of the Whole, this presentation will be coming from our Equalization Department to discuss what the findings are. These are the beginnings of that process.
Okay.
Brian, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, so, at this point, there's no discussion of a millage increases. The, the interesting thing is that the Headley Amendment limits how much additional revenue can be collected, and it's based on some general assumptions where.
Ryan, could you?
I understand, I'm responding to a question. The question was, is there a discussion of a millage increase? The answer is no. Next week, we will have a presentation on the Millage Collection. That will occur next Thursday at eight thirty-five. Set answer your question.
That answers my question, but I have a second.
Yep.
You said that we'll have the master plan next week, and if the millage is on the Committee of the Whole, will we have a presentation on the master plan? And can we get a full copy of that, like, yet this week, so we have a chance to go over it?
So, I was going to put this in my Commissioner report, but I guess I'll just, I guess I'll kick it off, right? Because Commissioner reports are next. So, the Planning Commission did review the final draft, and the Enabling Act, the Planning Enabling Act, requires it then to come to the full board to review. This will be the kickoff, and I believe that it's sixty-three days, that that report will be available for both, both the board and the public to review. We will have a public hearing on it to be able to adopt it and consider it after that, that time of public comment has closed. And so, this is the very, very first, well, not very, very first step, but the first step of formally adopting it that will happen. So, the resolution is specific in that it is to approve distribution of the plan.
Yeah, so Warren will appear next week at eight thirty-five. It's his standard presentation. The one thing that's interesting this year is that the collection will be up based on surprising circumstances. Essentially, the rate of inflation will then drive how much we can collect as a county and all of the local units, what they are able to collect. So, we are not adjusting millages, but we will anticipate an increased amount in the form of collection. Warren will be here, he'll walk you through that, we'll have a lot more detail than.
Set answer your questions. Are there any other questions for, for Finance? All right, hearing none, we will resume the Commissioner reports, and we're going to start this way. Commissioner Yarborough, if I may, start with you for a report on Commissioner. Okay.
I have no report, but Brownfield is today at one thirty, if anybody's interested. No report.
I attended my first Canexus meeting, and it was very interesting with Commissioner Yarborough, and I will be joining the sub-board of the Michigan Works portion of that group. So, I also attended, actually, just yesterday, the Trails Meeting. It was our final meeting, so that, that group has been disbanded. So, for the record, I guess, and that, if you want to, you know, remove that, it is done. They are expecting the plan to be complete in November. I've talked to Brian about having it as a tentative for a Committee of the Whole in November. So, you'll be seeing the finalized plan for Trails roughly early November, and then expect a presentation probably mid-November for the complete project. It's about 110 pages. Enjoy reading.
Last Friday, went up to Lansing for our Finance and General Government, and we had a presentation by Frankie Dane, who's a very young attorney, but he's the House Majority Legal Counsel, and he's working with a couple of reps up there, and they're going through the Open Meetings Act, and they're going through it line by line, and they're changing the wording, trying to make it where you don't have to have fifteen degrees to understand what it's trying to tell you, or read it fourteen times. It's, I've got a copy of it, if we want to make copies of it, look at it, but it makes it more plain for anybody to read and understand what it's telling you, and putting descriptions and things in here to help you with some of the words and things that, he says, most attorneys don't like to do things like this, because it's all written sixty years ago by the attorneys, and when you read it, it's hard to read. So, they're, they're really doing this and trying to get it through with just the wording changes before they make any other changes to it, but they're trying to make things where if you have a, just a chance meeting with a quorum of commissioners, that, that wouldn't be considered any type of a meeting. If it, it was a chance, there's no, there's no discussions or, you know, anything like that. So, those things need to be taken out, that's seventy years old, and that's what they're working on, and hopefully they finish that soon, and then they can get into the meat of it and make the changes that are needed. But that was a really good discussion, and if you drive up there, if you went up there three months ago and saw all the orange barrels and all the things going on, and sixty-nine ninety-four, it's worse now, so it's not. Had to go drive ten miles toward God knows where to get back to Battle Creek, to get back on the highway, and I was like, wow. But anyway, that's my report.
No report.
The only thing that I report on is I attended the St. Joe City Commission Meeting this past Monday. They've expressed appreciation for what the county is doing in expressing our opposition to the short-term rental bills, and they also are adopting a resolution with similar language to what we've said to our legislators, and hopefully they're going to get correspondence back, but I told them we haven't had any luck, so good luck to them. That's all I have to report on.
Thank you.
I attended the interviews for animal control.
I attended the, uh, interviews for animal control manager. Also, the Human Services Council met last Friday. And I participated in that along with Mr. Desette. And then I, yesterday, I, I attended the Hope and Healing, um, conference sponsored by the United Way and Bering Community Foundation at the Mendel Center. That would be my report.
Thank you.
This is my last report on this issue, as I won't be a county commissioner anymore. But we save the best for last. Um, for the past six years, I've been coming and doing this particular report. And today, I'm here to report to the board that I have two checks that I brought with me from the Local Revenue Sharing Board, uh, which I serve on. Last Tuesday, October eleventh, uh, the Pokagan Tribe had deposited three million, nine hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents into the Local Revenue Sharing Board. And our board then dispersed that. Uh, in the envelope here, I have two checks, Marion County's checks equal five hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and one cent. Um, so that'll be the last time that I do this one. And I'll give this all to Brian and you can take that to the treasurer. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you.
I bring glad tidings and glee.
Because we did save, save the best for last, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you all for the work that you do on the outside boards and committees that you're appointed to. Much appreciated. And, um, there's a lot of good things that are happening here in the county. Keep up the good work. With that, we'll move on to the administrators' report, if there is one.
Yeah, so just a reminder, next week's going to be busy. So on, uh, Wednesday, the nineteenth, we have budget. Uh, we've got that slated for two and a half hours in this room, starting at nine A.M. So the nineteenth, nine A.M. in this room. Um, following the budget, I'll be asking the admin committee to stay. We're going to have a discussion of the draft trail policy. So admin, I have, uh, staff from roads, staff from admin, and then staff from, um, parks, who will be joining you just to beat that document up. Uh, B.C. Bit, your next meeting will follow next Thursday's regular meeting. So tentative plan is twelve thirty, uh, for the next B.C. Bit meeting. And then, of course, you'll have your eight thirty-five, uh, committee of the whole and regular meeting on Thursday. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate that. Make sure to mark your calendars and we'll be here with bells on at nine A.M. on the nineteenth.
I guess one more comment, just to Jim. The happiest of birthdays, go Buckeyes.
Are you gonna, are you gonna be sending us a, uh, a meeting, a meeting notice for the calendars for the budget here? For the budget, guys?
We, we can send out a notification to.
That way it adds to the calendar right away. You know, old people, forget.
Yep.
There is nobody old on this, on this board. Just Ezra, is that, okay. All right, wait, we've digressed. Uh, with, with that, uh, we've come to the point on our agenda for general public comments. Anything that you wish to share with the Board of Commissioners, please do so by, uh, going to the podium, stating your name and your location, um, and share your thoughts with us. Is there any public comments at this time?
Come on, Julie.
Come on, Julie, go ahead. Yes.
Good morning, I was in the neighborhood, so I thought I'd stop by.
Good morning.
Yeah, so, and I'm sorry, I didn't get here for the beginning. There was a bit of a traffic jam on ninety-four, but you know, it's getting better. It's getting better.
Progress.
Yeah, and I love that, by that, anyway. So three things I wanted to share with you this morning. One is, I do send a newsletter at the beginning of the month, um, at the beginning of the month. And, but I know you get inundated with emails. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of the state proposal, um, ballot initiatives, uh, analysis that MSU Extension provides every year during the election year when we have ballot proposals. And so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. I brought hard copies of those documents you can share with your constituents. And I also, if, um, Brian thinks it's fit, we can send a link again out to you so that you can share that with folks who are asking questions about the three proposals and share our information. It's a non-bias analysis of that, uh, the choices that folks have to make. And, and people are beginning to ask questions if they haven't voted absentee already. They're heading to the polls, uh, and, and those questions are emerging. So I wanted to make sure you knew of that resource, as well as an online, um, workshop. That one was yesterday, another one next week. Uh, Q and A with some experts on the initiatives too is available. So I wanted to make sure you knew about that. The other one is, um, reminder of the new commissioner school that will be coming up for new commissioners. Um, and, um, those that have been on the board a while, never hurts to get a, get a re, redo on that stuff and also, um, network with your fellow commissioners in the state. Um, there's an online and a face-to-face component to the trainings now. If you sign up for those, you get a, a plethora of online resources that you can go back to and refer to over time when the questions come up. And so it's worth the price of admission, if you will. And of course, we partner with MAC on that training program every two years. The other thing I'm pleased to announce is that right today, just today, we are fully staffed in the extension office. We've just hired two new community nutrition instructors, both from the county. And we're pleased to get them started just in the last two weeks. Uh, don't quote me on saying we're fully staffed if I talk to you next week. But I'm just saying, you know how it goes. But anyway, I wanted to just report that we're pleased to get those new folks on. Young people really excited to teach nutrition education in the county. So that's all. Thanks for the time and I will leave these, so you can take these, uh, copies with you.
Julie, if you want to set them here on the table, and then. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good morning, everyone. Shoakway Pitch Forbidden Charter Township. I just wanted to come up and quickly talk about what my main job is throughout the day. I am the Executive Director of Barry and Forward. And I want to start to make some public comments just about what this organization is, as we're sending out a lot of mail right now that's introducing the organization. And before people get it in their inboxes, it is a five-oh-one-C-four nonprofit, which is a political nonprofit. And one of the things we've done recently, we started our fundraising campaign. We've raised about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this organization. And what we did was we hired high school students to go door-to-door and talk about issues that matter in community. And I just want to quickly give you a rundown on some of the most prevalent issues right now in Marion County. So we knocked on about seventeen thousand doors. And in those conversations, we found that seventy-eight percent of people believe that a woman's right to choose is the most important issue on the ballot this year for them. We found that ninety-three percent of people specifically in the new thirty-eighth Lake Shore District find that water quality, Lake Shore erosion, and the situation of what happened in Benton Harbor with the lead line replacements is the most important issue, making sure that we're fixing water infrastructure. And then we also got seventy-eight percent of people to commit to turning the ballot over and voting in the nonpartisan section for Michigan State Supreme Court, whether it's ballot proposals, things of that nature. So I just want to let you know, that's what this organization is about. We've got TV advertisements up about civic engagement. And what we're trying to do is get more people. And we're not necessarily partisan for one political party. We'll endorse a Democrat, we'll endorse a Republican for a race. We'll send mail on their behalf, all compliant with C-four standards. But what we're doing is trying to find out what are the issues that matter in community to Marion County and then endorse candidates who actually reflect those values. While also on the other side, making sure that we're supporting organizations that are trying to do good work in the community. So we've started even doing some initial grant writing. So far, we've given out about twenty-five hundred dollars in grants. We have another twenty-five hundred to give. And we hope to expand that going forward as this organization grows. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hager Township. A couple of weeks ago, I went a couple of blocks down here, city commission meeting. You ought to see their room they got there. You guys, take a look at it. It's about twice as big as this. I know you guys are smiling, you know, you got a lot of money to spend and you're sitting in this little cubby hole here, rubbing, uh, elbows together. You know, if I was, uh, sitting out there with you guys, I would, why don't you, somebody make a motion? No, to get out of this room, expanded or something, I guess you guys don't do that. You gotta have a, one of these, right? Okay, anyway, I went down there and complained about the water because they got too much chlorine in it, see. I know, I live out in Hager, I got my own little pump. But here, there's too much, every time I flush the toilet or something, you know, maybe I got a better nose than most of you. Anyway, after each presentation, you know, you guys, somebody talks about something, then you go around and ask if anybody wants to have a question. When they're done over there, they ask the audience. I've got a speaker up, he's all done, you guys question him. Then the audience gets a chance. You guys deny us that. You got, we gotta wait till the end of their meeting, when then you want to give us two minutes. And another thing, they give us three minutes. No, that's fifty percent more than what you guys are doing. No, you have to be ashamed of yourself when you're only allowing us two minutes. That's about all I got to say. So I'm going to see that change here, okay? Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Yes. You're definitely going to have to state your name, who you are. Please.
Uh, Sheriff Paul Bailey lives in this great county, Marion Township, Marion County. Uh, but I just want to get up and, and say that the animal control is in good shape. Ashley Her is an awesome young lady. She's very educated, she's very compassionate about dogs, and she's going to be a great supervisor. We have supervisors of all different. I don't need to supervise the shelter. The county commissioners made the right decision to give the enforcement division over to me, five deputies. And the shelter is going to be run by a director, Ashley, who has done a wonderful job since she's taken over. Personnel matters unless they're criminal, they're private. You can't know, just like when you were a teacher. Personnel problems with the teachers weren't anybody's business unless they were criminal. So, so what happened in the past, the county commissioners did a great job addressing. And now we have a great running animal control unit, working hand-in-hand with Ashley Her and my, uh, five deputies that are assigned over there. So I just wanted to get up and let the public know that is tuned in, that animal control is going well. And if you have any questions, please call me direct or call Ashley Her. We would be happy to have you stop in at the shelter. Ashley will be happy to tell you what she does every day and what her employees do and what the volunteers do. We're happy to tell you what we do in the enforcement side by going out and taking all the dog calls and other animal calls, but mostly dog calls. Uh, the deputies have done a wonderful job. We're very busy, uh, with animal control calls every day, making sure that we're holding people accountable, that they're not being cruel to any animals that exist in Marion County. If you are, if we find out about it, you are going to be investigated and prosecuted if you mistreat any animal in this county. So I just wanted to let this young gentleman know over here that we're, are in good shape and that unless the personnel problem is criminal, it is private.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Are there any other public comments at this time? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is other businesses. Is there any other business that needs to come before this board? Hearing none. Uh, announcements, I know that Commissioner Majerik made the announcement. Brownfield is meeting today at, uh, one thirty down in the autograph. Um, is there any other announcements or reminders? Only the nineteenth budget hearing at nine A.M. here. So with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.